This is the November 12th meeting of the library trustees. This meeting is being recorded.
Public comments? We can postpone them until later in the meeting.
That's good.
Should we officially call it to order to make sure we're good?
We were called to order at 7:00.
Communications?
We received, we were approved in the first round for state aid. So we were certified on November 7.
What does that mean? Do we get a certain amount of money?
Yep, yep. It looks like our state aid initial award is going to be $7,504.81. And I think that usually arrives around March-ish for us for the first bit. So that's good. Oh, and we also, the select board approved my request for a library Instagram page. So we are moving on into the modern world. We've gotten quite a lot of followers so far, so we're hoping it's going to reach a different crowd.
Is it a particular population?
Yeah, yeah. The teen, well Heather has one for the teens, but this is, we're hoping to get kind of the 20 to 30 crowd who's kind of moving away from Facebook and moving towards Instagram. So, yeah, we've got quite a lot of followers on that so far and hopefully it'll just get more exposure for us. Last month I attended a library director's roundtable. We actually hosted it here. We had directors from West Hampton and Agawam and a couple other local places. So it was a really good meeting. And, oh, well, that can come later with the new business. So that's it. That's it so far. So if we want to approve the October minutes, I think everybody got a copy of those, right? Motion to approve?
Have you all had a chance to read them yet? Make sure I got them. I think they were inclusive. I was running pretty fast last week, last month.
Well, I talk fast too, so if you ever need me to slow down, sometimes I just get going and I don't realize.
So who did you say came to the roundtable? Agawam?
Agawam, Palmer, West Hampton, and, well, and me. So then, yep.
So just four libraries?
There were four of us. Yep, yep.
Looks good to me. But I'm not the teachers.
I think there was only one change that I noticed in the old business. Pam's last name is R-O-V-E-L-L-I.
R-O-V, okay. Ro Valley.
Ro Valley. And Paige doesn't have an I. It's just regular Paige.
P-A-G-E?
Yep.
It's her first in the real life.
So when our summer page starts, we're going to be really confused.
We're already confused with two Heathers.
So a little more, right?
Yep. Just one more thing, you know?
Any other changes, Carol? What's any other changes?
I don't see anything. There's no guarantee there.
So all votes in favor? Proving the minutes?
Aye.
All seconded, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I messed that up. Oops. Sorry. I never first it.
Okay, well, we'll go to director's.
There's only one thing of note under the October 2019, the gifts. There's a little bit more in there that we deposited as a chunk, just because it was between the time that we were understaffed and then Heather was training. So we didn't make a deposit for a little bit longer than we normally did. So we just ended up with a larger sum going into the gifts account. So it's, it's nothing special. It just looks like there's a lot going in. But other than that, I think we had a pretty good October.
We're spending a lot of computer use.
Yeah, we've been, we've been having a pretty steady computer usage. Yeah.
Is there anything in particular we can attribute it to?
Not, not that I can think of. I do know Heather is very good about helping people on computers. So she's had a lot of repeat customers coming in, you know, to, to help time and time again. She's been very good with helping people out with their questions. So that could be it.
How about the picnic table?
Yes. Bob Johnson is, since the friends decided they didn't want the cement slab because it was so expensive, Bob Johnson is looking into pricing for cement pillars to go underneath it so that it's some way connected to the ground so nobody can take it. He is supposed to be getting me an estimate by tomorrow night for the friends meeting. So we should be able to let them know and they can decide. Because he thinks it's something the town may be able to do. And, yeah, it seems like a more reasonable thing to do than having a cement slab. That was, that was very expensive.
Yeah, when that building is being built?
Yeah, no, no. Yeah, we just, we just want to make sure it doesn't get stolen. That's, that's about it.
Or you make it difficult.
Yes. Yeah, they don't, they don't put that much effort in for a picnic table. If it's too much trouble, they won't bother. So moving into new business, we've, we've trained all staff on First Amendment audits. And a notice went out with the town too that there are groups going around that are trying to test the first, their First Amendment rights and attempt to film in a location which is a public space. And technically they are allowed to film. But it's a, it's a YouTube movement and it's, it's gaining traction and the town.
I'm sorry, I missed the beginning of what you said.
Yep. They're called, they're called First Amendment audits where it's just regular people go into a place and try to just, most of the time they're just filming. They want you to tell them to stop, that you're not allowed to film here. And then they'll claim that it's a violation of their First Amendment rights. So, so we've trained all our staff to just let them know what we, what we should do in the event that someone does come in and film. Technically, they have every right to, you know, but, you know, we, we should just try to. I did, since the town sent out a memo about it because it happened at a Worcester police station. So it is moving from the eastern part of the state to more out here. I had written back to Carl and said, and asked if the town council had any recommendations on if it should happen, what we should do.
You haven't had an incident?
No, we haven't had anything, but it's, it's been happening more and more frequently. I think it's kind of dying down now that they know we're prepared to deal with it and that it's not going to be a surprise anymore. So it has been dying down, but we made sure everybody was aware just in case because nine times out of 10, what they do is they film and then they post that film on YouTube, which they did at a library out in Eastern Mass. And pretty much the, the woman they confronted was, it was just not good. So, yeah.
But if they're filming something in the children's library, you can't film a child without the camera off, you know?
Yes, yeah. And most of them that I've seen are very conscious of that, that they will not go into a children's room. But that these are just regular people, so they may not realize or they may not care. So we're just making sure that we're prepared if, I doubt it, but if it does happen that we know what to do and that we're not violating anyone's rights. Because that's what they want you to do. They want you to tell them, know that you can't do it. So then, you know, they can.
Post it.
Yeah.
So what, what have you told the staff to do?
They have every right to film. It's a public building. Basically, all we can ask them to do is be respectful, be respectful of the people here. And if you're going to film, we're going to let people know that you're filming. And if they don't want to be filmed, you know, they're, they're going to have to leave. They need to let you know. And that's basically it. I mean, unfortunately, you know, well, not unfortunately, I mean, it is a public building, so they have every right to. But on the other hand, you know, people come to a library for, you know, sometimes it's a sanctuary and they don't want to be filmed. You know, for whatever reason, they're doing something on the computer and they, you know.
Now, are we keeping the tape of our cameras?
Yes, our cameras are kept for a week. So if we ever need to go back in and look at anything, you know, obviously we need to know within the timeframe. But, but yes, ours don't stay forever.
Now, I wasn't sure if the state or anyone had, you know, time limits or?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm sure, I'm sure there's something. But when I spoke to Paul from Protective Services, he's the one who manages our cameras. He seemed to think that that was kind of standard practice and that should be just fine in case anything happens and we need to get back in there and see if, and go back and look at anything. So that's that, the First Amendment audits. Staff are trained, so we don't show up as a First Amendment audit fail on YouTube. If you're interested, I recommend watching some of the videos on YouTube. They're, they're pretty intense. They're pretty intense. And then the, the next thing, we are working on the holiday schedule. So we're going to be closed the Thursday of Thanksgiving and the Friday following. And then we are going to be closed Christmas Day. And I've been working with Paul and the union and talking with Carl and just figuring out what we do about, you know, Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve.
What day of the week is Christmas?
Christmas Eve is a day.
Christmas is a Wednesday.
Tuesday, yeah. So, so working with Paul and the union, we decided to close Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. New Year's Eve will be open till 5:00 PM and then closed New Year's Day. And, yeah, since it, since there's a lot of days closed this time of year, if staff wants to, you know, we're going to give them the option to, to make. There was a lot of, there was some concern about, you know, staff being short hours with all the holidays closed. So we're going to do our best to try to get everybody to, to have the opportunity to make up some hours, especially since we're going to have a little bit more in our budget because there was such a gap with so many employees gone that they think they're pretty appreciative of that. We did have our first staff meeting before the volunteer brunch. It went really well. Everybody but one person was in attendance and she just couldn't make it. And we, we covered a lot of things. We, I gave them some updates on what we're working on, kind of the big projects, and opened the floor for anybody to talk about what's working and what's not working. So we've got some good suggestions. We're going to work on getting our, our procedures better in order and, you know, just kind of clarifying. Because there, it's hard when you have a staff that's somewhere in the morning, somewhere in the evening. They don't cross paths. So it was nice to get everybody together and get their feedback on, you know, what we can do to fix things up and make things a little bit easier for them. And we've also decided to try and, you know, train them on a few different things. Because there's different circulation procedures that fairly simple, but there's a lot of passing back and forth between different employees. But it's something we can easily train across the circulation staff. So everybody knows how to do it and it just makes better customer service for when the patrons go up to the desk if, if everybody knows how to do it instead of shuffling them around between, between departments. On the side of that, I was, I was wondering if it was all possible, if, since it's hard to get staff together for a training, if it was, and I can always check in with the town too. I don't know how they would feel about us potentially closing for one morning so we could get staff together for a training. I think we've, we did that before, when I was here before, after we switched over to CW Mars and did that.
Other towns also do that.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Because it would just make things easier.
What could you do on a Wednesday morning when you're not open?
Yeah, yeah. We could potentially do that. I just, I try to make it easy on them so there's, so they're, yeah.
I should say if the town objects, maybe you see.
If the town objects, then yes, yeah.
Wednesday morning.
Yeah, I try to make it easy. So if there's, if there's people, if there's a good number of people already working like a Tuesday morning or something, then we can, the less I have to interrupt people's outside schedules, the better. So, yeah, overall, the meeting was very good. People really seemed to like being able to get together and talk about things. So I think we're going to try to do it quarterly and just get everybody together. Because things pop up every now and again. And it was just very helpful for me to see, you know, what their opinions are, what we can do better on and, and things that, you know, we haven't even thought about that we need to fix. And on the same morning, we also hosted the volunteer brunch, which had a pretty good crowd. So I think it was really, it was really nice. And thank you for everybody. Tracy, your stuff is in the staff room if you haven't gotten it yet.
Yeah, it was a beautiful print.
Yeah, yeah.
It was gorgeous. Did you do it or was it good for you?
No, I made it. Yeah, I made, I didn't make it. No, I had, yeah. It was at the deli in Windsor Locks. I had them make it.
Yeah, so thank you to everybody who brought something and it was, it was really nice. I passed around, we have to submit every year for our strategic plan. Every December, they want us to submit a action plan so they can see how we're working on our strategic plan and how it's coming together. So I wrote up kind of where we are and things we're working on as far as our plan. And this is what we will be submitting to the Board of Library Commissioners this year and the next couple of years until we have to go through the process of writing another plan. So basically, it listed all of our different goals and our objectives and what we're hoping to work on in the next fiscal year or so. And I don't know if anybody had any questions about it. It's, it's pretty self-explanatory. It's just basically where, where we're going in the next fiscal year. But, yeah, I think the biggest thing we're working on is working with the police department to get some type of training and procedures in place in case of an emergency.
I think we need coffee and hot cocoa. That needs to be added.
Welcome to Sin Spring. They've had Keurigs for a few years.
Agawam has it.
Agawam does.
Agawam has it. Westfield has it. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I see our, I see our no food and drinks and I was wondering where. I was like, hmm. It would be nice to have a Keurig.
At least for trustee meetings, we should have a Keurig.
We do color chat and cookies.
I know. I mean, if, if, if there isn't a huge objection to that, that can kind of be a, I think that would be a really nice thing to have. And everybody looks at you.
Till it's still on the new rug and everything.
That's what I was worried about. I'm like, I don't know.
That's why we put the, the rug went down in tiles and you just replace the square.
That's true. That's true.
See, there you go.
But with our luck, they'd run out of the color we have or something silly.
Then you start to check the board.
Yeah, there we go. Yeah, so that might be a nice idea for this winter time. Yeah. Action plan, yes. So this, this is what we're going to be working on. I had the different departments look at it, the young adult, children's librarians. I had Paul from Reference look at it too and just add anything they were thinking. But I think we've got, we've got a lot to do. But I think we're doing a pretty good job already. We're really working on, to jump on another part of what I have on here. We're really working on making the business department or the business center a little bit more prevalent so that people, I think, I think it's a really good collection and I think people just don't know that it's there. So we're really working on, if we're trying to move that to a more central location so more people can see it. I met with Kate, Kate of the Greater Westfield Chamber of Commerce for some ideas on, on how to reach businesses and kind of what businesses are at and what they're doing in Southwick and the surrounding communities. And she gave me some really good ideas. And I'm just trying to, I don't know if you know this, Mike, if the town is part of the Chamber of Commerce, if.
Sorry, just throw these on the minutes.
Oh, I think those were the ones Susan printed. If, if the town is technically part, if we're a part as well.
I think the only part of it is economic development.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, Kate was really nice. She was really, really talking about how the benefits of joining. And she said as a nonprofit, we would be eligible to join based on a number of employees. She said it would be about 375 annually. I don't know if that's something we would consider because it seems like a really good way to get the word out there. One of the things I think, we, people really like this library, but I think one of the things we're not, we haven't been doing is we're kind of waiting for people to come to us. And we're not going out there and we're not getting them, we're not, you know, unless they come to us, they don't know what we have. So I, I was thinking that this might be a really good way to kind of get ourselves out there. She says there's, there's different networking events. There's chances for us to have tables and information at certain events that they do. So I was thinking it might be a really good thing to try and just to see, you know, if maybe this can kind of get, because we have a really great little library and I just think we're not, we're not putting ourselves out there enough to let people know what we have.
You know, you're talking to the head of the economic.
Yeah, no, I know, I know.
So most of this all has to go through him anyway.
Yes, yes.
We've been discussing via email.
Okay.
I, I read the, what was it? The Economic Development Plan the other day? Fascinating stuff. Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that would be something.
Yeah, if you want, I'd say if you want to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it would be definitely worth trying, even if just for a year, to get our, to get ourselves out there. It seems like there's a lot of networking opportunities. And she said it's a really good way to get, working with some of the businesses. And that's, that's who we're really trying to connect to with the business collection. And, you know.
Because the way Westfield does at the city, the schools are part of it. Westfield Gas and Electric is, there's at least one or two other parts of the city of Westfield. If you look at the directory, you see all these different departments.
Now who was Kate with?
The Greater Westfield Chamber of Commerce.
With the Chamber of Commerce, okay.
Executive Director.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I don't recall her last name off the top.
Ph- E-H-E-O-N.
She knew right who you were. Oh, him. Yeah, yeah. So I think that's something we'd like to try and just see if, if that's a good way to not only get the word out about us, but also to kind of interact with some of the businesses, not only in town, but in the surrounding communities.
What's the quiet study space?
Ah. We have, ah.
I know you, you've got those little things you have on the table.
This, this is a pipe dream, but bear with me, all right? We've been weeding a lot because a lot of our collection is, is very out of date. So we've been weeding a lot and we're managing to, if the collection is, I will get to the point, I promise. You know, by, by kind of getting rid of the excess stuff, the stuff that's outdated, that needs to be replaced, we're, we're shrinking down our nonfiction a little bit. And hopefully, I'm intending to move the business up to where references, our reference section was also really outdated. So I've been going through that and just, you know, things like the, the medical stuff expires after.
1982 was a good year.
I, I know this, but, but even, even something five years old is, is unfortunately outdated. So, so we're hoping to move the business up. And if you know that, that section of wall over to the right of the business section there, there's that nice corner there. And I'm, I'm thinking of, I was just trying to think of what we can do to potentially make one or two partitioned off kind of small study spaces so that we have more options when it comes to people meeting in here because, and, I mean, it's, it's good because people can have their quiet study space who, I mean, I don't think it's, it's going to be completely quiet. But even sometimes if you have walls up, there's the illusion of privacy. These are just kind of some of the things that I was looking at. Even if there's that illusion of privacy, you know, you still, if you don't have people walking around and milling around, then it's still kind of nice to be, yeah.
Do the high school students still hang around that corner?
They hang around most of the corners, yes. Wherever they know we can't see them, yes. So, yeah, so these are at least some things that I'm kind of thinking of. Some of the prices are a little high, some are a bit more reasonable. But just, and I think it'll be beneficial because we can also have more small groups that meet here and also make use, more use of the community room. Because sometimes there's, you know, there's a meeting in here and it's, it's like four or five people. And so that's, you know, we could be doing a program or we could be doing something else that evening. And if there were more meeting room spaces, they might actually like it. Because sometimes like when you're here and you're meeting and there's this huge room, it might be nicer to just have a kind of a smaller space.
That was something that used to be on the budget this, every year was the.
Yeah.
Yep.
The folding wall.
Yeah.
To separate.
That was in the budget request for years and it's got nowhere. You want to spend how many cells?
Yeah. Yeah, so that's, that's kind of what I meant and what I was thinking of.
So you're not thinking of like a study carol?
No, I don't.
A bigger group area.
Study carols.
I think, yeah, I mean, we have the study carols and they're.
And they're not private?
No, they're not very private, no. I mean, if you can have your own sectioned off room, you know, there's nobody walking around, you know, if you want to work two or three people or if you want some privacy, then.
They came to, they started out together, one went one way and one went the other. Are they the same?
No, they're different.
I didn't think so.
That's all.
You didn't see that. You didn't see this. Okay.
Because at one point, somebody had said in the YA area, if they could get kind of like plastic panels or something that could be seen through or whatever, you could just kind of, kind of close off part of them.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's essentially kind of the same thing. I mean, some of them are, the more expensive ones are like acoustic panels that's going to block sound. But I think even if we got something that's, you know, as long as there's kind of the illusion of privacy, if it doesn't completely block sound, you still feel like you've got a little bit of a.
I know when I've been in here during the day, you often have someone tutoring a child.
Yes, yes.
And they'd be sitting, when I'm sitting there, sorry, cells there, trying to get their work done in the next study carol or the little carol.
Yeah.
That doesn't work.
No, it doesn't, yeah. Our setup of, of one big room, it does, the sound, the sound carries. There's, there's distraction, there's people walking around. I mean, if we can eventually have some type of set aside, ideally two, two sections would be great. And just enough for like a small five-person meeting would be fantastic.
Yep.
Just so.
And with that New England consortium of buildings or colleges or whatever buying thing.
Yeah, we could.
Maybe you could find some made available.
Yeah, we could potentially, yeah. You can get really good discounts through them. So there's potentially that too. But, yeah, it's, it's kind of a pipe dream. I mean, I've seen, I've seen Diane ordered some, you know, larger scale furniture and things through the state aid account. So it could potentially be something for that, you know, when we were ready to, to decide what we want to do, but.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I think, yeah, eventually, I'll hopefully have a chance to look in, to find out a little bit more. Another library, I, when I put a request out onto the email list, somebody said that they had some old ones they, they were getting rid of, but they're only about this high and that's kind of, I think that's too, that's too low for what I was, what I was thinking of. But it would have been nice to get some for free. But, but then again, I'd have to, we'd have to try it out there and pick them up, but.
You can always, you know, look, sometimes schools and stuff have that stuff.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, it would be, it would be nice to have.
Even like daycare or something that's closed in or whatever that...
Yeah, it would be nice to have eventually. Um, then, then we probably also, well, I mean, the tables we have could work, but let's, we'll start with, we'll start with the walls first before we start anything else. Um, and then, ah, the, the staff room. Um, I have the, for the book sale, it, it doesn't come up till April and we've, since we've been doing so many weeding, so much weeding, um, and we, people drop off and you come in on a Monday morning and there's donations out by the book drop. So we get a lot of stuff. And it's really, in the past, it is really piled up in the staff room and I feel really bad for our staff who has to eat lunch in there. So I did work with, um, Russ, is it Russ, the fire chief? Okay, yep, he came and he, I had him look at our basement to see about the potential of storing stuff down there. Because my, my two concerns are the moisture and potential fire hazards. He said, um, and he, he took me down there. We walked through it. He looked at it. There's sprinklers down there. So we could, we can store things down there as long as they're out of the way, below a certain height, um, so.
Like across the hall from the furnace and stuff?
Yep, yep. There's a lot of chairs and other assorted stuff in that room already. So potentially, he says we can store things down there. Um, so my next step is,
Moisture.
Moisture. There is supposedly a little device you can get at Home Depot or wherever that will kind of measure the moisture down there. So I'm, I'm planning to get one and just leave it down there for a couple of days to see. It doesn't see moist. It doesn't smell it. It doesn't look it. One of our staff, her son, um, he's able to get a couple pallets from work so we can put stuff off the ground. So nothing's going to be on the ground. And so as long as it's not moist, I'm hoping that the friends would be okay with us storing some things down there.
It's more apt to be moisture
Yeah.
in, in the summer than in the, in the winter and this weather you don't.
At least, at least for now, because the book sale's not till April. So we've got a lot of stuff. And it's, I've, I've heard in the past that it's been piled up on the couch in the break room and the tables in the break room. And, yeah, and I, I just.
It's ridiculous.
Yeah, yeah, no, and it's, I mean, it's, and it's a safety concern too. There's dust, there's mold, you know? You don't want to eat your lunch next to that. So people pull their donations out from, you don't want to know where they've been stored. So it's, I think if we can get some stuff down in the basement, then we can kind of liven up our break room a little bit, just to make it a little bit more friendly for the staff people who have to like hang out in there. So I'm just going to make sure that the basement isn't moist. And then, um, there has been the other concern about moving stuff up and down. Hopefully we can get some, we can rope some of the maintenance guys into helping us. I think if we have a couple of extra hands, it's not going to be that bad. And then come April, when there's the book sale, then we'll see if we can rope them back up.
Get some of the football players from the high school.
They really, they, they like us, yeah. So see if, and I don't, I don't think it'll be a big deal. If we do, even if it's just, you know, a couple of us and we do a little bit here and there, then.
Do they have community service requirements?
Some libraries have community service from the key club or whatever, or Agawam used to use the football team.
There we go. Yeah, so hopefully we can, um, we can kind of clear some of the stuff out in the staff room and make it a little bit more, a little bit more pleasant. Because we have all that storage in the basement and it's fantastic. In other places I've worked, I've had an empty basement and they told me I can't store anything down there. So if we have the space and we can use it, then.
Yeah, my concern is just the moisture.
Yep, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll test it out. I'm going to get that little, I don't remember the name of it, but I'm going to get that.
Hygrometer?
Yes, something like that. And I'm going to put it, I'm going to put it down there for a couple of days and just see, because, um, yeah, and just see how, I think it's supposed to rain a little bit next week, so we'll just see how it, how it works out. Um.
And he's also just putting a dehumidifier down there?
That too. If it, if it is moist.
Somebody might have to empty it.
That's fine. Yeah, I mean, if, if it is moist.
In my house, they just put in a new one with a pipe that goes up to the drain there. If there's not a drain out of it. I don't know what's in the basement.
Yeah.
And you'd have to have it over by the furnace and I'm not sure if there is a floor drain or not.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, you can get a humid, a dehumidifier pretty cheap, so. So if, if it does come back to be moist, then, then that's the route we go. And then the last part is just the, the closing procedure. Um, I, I know when I used to work here in the past, there, there's been kind of a, an unwritten policy as to what to do. We, we've had an issue with a lot of children being unattended at closing time. Just this past Friday, there was a young girl at closing time whose ride was not coming till six. We closed at five. It's dark. It's cold. We Yeah, it's, it's, so we, we really need to have some type of, um, I would really like to have some type of written policy in place so that in the past, I think what we've, what we've said, and I, I, we never did it when I was here. I don't know if it was ever done, that there, there was a child left unattended, we would call the police. They would wait with them.
I've never seen it.
Yeah.
That's what I was going to say. They used to do that at the rec center for kids, where they didn't pick them up after game or something and the kids are just hanging around. No one wants to go home leaving kids.
Yeah, especially, it's, it's this time of year and it's cold and it's dark. And this young girl said, I'm just going to wait outside. And it's like, no, you can't do that.
And are you talking the little ones or the YA too?
It's, it's usually the YA, the younger YAs.
Yeah.
But even, even still, if they're still sixteen and it's dark out there and there's nothing around, then, um, then I'm hoping, I know we have kind of the unwritten policy, but I'm hoping to get something down on paper so we can back ourselves up. Um, I've talked with other libraries on what they do and most of them, it's the same thing. If there's, if there's no parent, the police are called and they either wait with the child or they pick the child up and bring them back to the station.
You should come talk to the police and tell them that this is, unless they have another.
I plan to, yeah, that's what I hope to do. I plan to get their opinion on it just to see. So we're, I mean, if, I don't want to be calling them all the time. I don't think we will. Um, but, you know.
I think you call them once and it won't happen again.
Yeah.
You shouldn't have to sit around for another half hour or so too, waiting for the, the parents to come in.
Well, I, I think what, what I think, what some other people do that I think is reasonable is first, they have two staff people wait. You don't have one staff person waiting with a child. You have two staff people wait. If we close and there's nobody there at closing, we wait fifteen minutes. If nobody arrives, then we call the police. People get caught in traffic. People are late from work. I get that. That's, that's understandable, but it's usually the same.
Yeah, but you said in this case, some of the rides aren't coming till six.
Having a good time somewhere and just don't get back.
After full hour.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I think if, if we wait fifteen minutes, two staff people wait fifteen minutes with a child, and then if nobody comes, then we call the police and just have them, I can discuss with the police what they want to do, if they want to pick them up, if they want to wait with them.
Yep.
And then we know. And then, um, so for next time, I can write something up.
And definitely have two people.
That's, that's, that's what the big suggestion was and I definitely agree on that. Um, yeah, so, so I can try to write something up for next time. So we have something official to go on. But just for the time being, that will be our plan. Um, because we, we waited about a half an hour, forty-five minutes on Friday night with the young lady.
But if you have, uh, two staff people, will they get, do they get extra pay? Are they? Are they hourly?
Union.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing. That's the thing.
So they should get paid, right? That extra time then, yeah.
Yeah.
What's that?
They're in the union.
Didn't you, you know?
Well, it was, it happened to be that it was that evening. It was the two of us who weren't, so it was, it was fine. But yes, um, yes, any, any time that somebody would wait, then yes, they should get paid. I do agree.
That's good.
Yep, yeah, no, I wouldn't make anybody stay.
Now, what did that parent or person say when they got here? They didn't know the library closed at five?
Um, well, unfortunately, what happened was, um, we explained to the girl that, you know, we'll wait a little bit longer, but if the parent doesn't come, then we will need to contact the police. I think she spoke to her parents and unfortunately, you know, we were, I was working and I hear the door shut and I looked out and she was pulling away in a yellow cab. So they had called a cab for her. I would much rather see her with a, with a police officer going somewhere safe just because of, just because of the age.
Because we don't have cab service in Southwick, so they've got to be coming from Springfield or maybe Westfield.
Yeah, I don't know. Um, but it just, it just leads to a lot of situations like that where it's just like, I, I didn't go home with a good feeling after that on Friday and, and, um, yeah, I think so. If we, if we have a plan where we wait for, I think we just need to have some type of plan so staff knows what to do. Because more often than not, they're going, what do we do? Do we wait? Do we wait? Is this child too young to stay alone? Is this child old enough to stay alone? What do we do?
Do you know offhand whether it's often the same parents that are late all the time?
Yes, yes. Nine times out of ten, yes.
Yep.
Um, so if, if we have some type of plan, then, and then if we get something in writing, then we can back ourselves up. Because I imagine there'd be a little bit of pushback by somebody. I mean, but...
Yep, but you're not babysitting.
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly.
Yeah, and we have families to get home to as well, so we.
Wouldn't they rather have their child safe, whether it be at a police station or a year or whatever?
The schools lock up at three o'clock or three thirty or whatever.
Yep. Yeah, so it's, it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, never a problem. It's mostly just Thursdays and Fridays when we close at five and, and, and yeah, and we don't, we, I just, there's not, there's nothing around.
Maybe if they have to go to the police station to pick up the kids, they might, the police might talk to them, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The police catcher.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, I'll speak with the police department and just get their, their feel, because I just want to make them aware that if we're going to be doing this, you know, at least that way they're aware. So we're not just calling up all, not random and...
I think that's definitely what you should do though.
And, and yeah, and then that will be our plan. We'll wait for fifteen minutes, just on the off chance parents running late, it happens. And then after that, then, yeah, then we'll just give them a call because, you know, some of, not, not me, but some of us have our own children to pick up too, so. I just have my dogs to feed, so they can, they can wait a little bit, but, but, yeah.
Yeah, you want to get home too. You didn't have a home.
Oh, yeah, oh, I know. They get really mad when they don't get fed on time, so.
Yeah, we all get hungry.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll work on that and I'll try to get something written up for next time so we can officially approve it. But just for the time being, then that's kind of the, the policy we'll operate under. And then I think that was, that was it for me.
And then as Lynn said, she'll put, put the budget together and we can discuss it and finalize it next month.
Yep.
One other topic that I didn't, hadn't written down, but something that they, some libraries seem to be getting involved with and others don't. Should we get involved with the twenty twenty census?
Um, yes, yes.
In terms of promoting it or?
Yeah, I think so. Um, we've, I've already met with a representative from kind of the area. He had, he had a table here last month about anybody they're still hiring for census jobs. Not as much now, but they were, he had a little table here for anybody who was interested. And I'm hoping to have maybe one or two other kind of a basic, what is the census? Why should you fill it out type thing? And even, um, if, if our reference staff is, is fine with it, having like open sessions with them. So if people need help, because I think they're still doing it on paper. It's mostly online, so.
Yeah, they're trying to get most people to, to fill out your census online.
So if people need help.
And there's a lot of people who don't have the internet at all.
Yeah, exactly. So if we, even, I'm just, I'm, I'm already making sure that they're, they're aware. They're kind of trained on what it looks like, what we can and can't do. We can't tell people what to answer. But we can get them to where they need to be. Um, and then if we, if they decide to and we can work it out, then we can have sessions where they can come in and work one-on-one with somebody if they need a little bit of extra help.
So you're talking about first having training or meetings or training sessions with the census takers, with personnel?
No.
And then, and then maybe opening to the community coming in?
Yeah, well, what I'm hoping to do is have some kind of session with the census personnel about what the census is about, you know, kind of anything, any questions people have, why it's important, um, yes.
Well, see, this way they're doing the census different than they've done it before. Everyone got it in the mail. You filled it out and you mailed it back. Now they're trying to get most people to do it online and you don't have to wait till April first. They'll be doing it for a week or two weeks or something in March, coming up to April first. So that the person knocking on the door might be in late April if they haven't heard from people.
Yep, yep.
There was an article, I think in today's paper, about the census workers contacting you either, are you doing your census either online or you could be called on the phone even to do it? You know, rather than have someone come to the house that could be making phone calls.
Yeah. Yeah, I think they said they were, the, the doing house calls was kind of a last resort if anybody hasn't done it yet. They kind of want to do.
It was in neither today or yesterday's paper.
Yeah, so we, so we've got a couple of things going for that, um, because I definitely think we'll see at least a few people trying to fill out the census here. So we're just making sure that, um, Paul and Heather, Reference, know what it's about, know how they can help, how they can't help. You know, we're not allowed to tell people, oh, you should answer this for that question. And, but we can help them get to the right page and where they need to be, so. Yep. And then, uh, budget stuff at the end of the month and then I'll have something for December's meeting.
One of the things you might want to consider when you're putting your budget proposal together, they've been trying it now for twenty years and they've gotten, I think, six hours in twenty years, is expanding hours. For some people, because remember there was some talk about the time you were coming or just before of trying to expand, like the,
Yeah.
Children's library and going from twenty-three to thirty-seven and a half or something.
Yes. Yeah.
So those types of things, you'll find it on the forms that they send out to you. You have to include it in there and then include it in your budget on the front page.
Okay.
Because if you don't ask, because
You don't get, yeah.
These are public meetings they hold on, on, on two Saturdays in late January, September, February.
Early in the morning.
They start like at eight or eight-thirty and they try to finish up by around twelve.
We try to come and support you.
But I, I've sat in on some of them for DPW and the police and the fire department, and they're always asking for one additional tool officers, three Crown Vex and then they get.
And they get them.
I need two dump trucks. I will give you a pickup truck and one dump truck.
And then they have a dump truck that loses its whole.
Right. A couple of years ago, lost the whole bottom of the wheel and everything went.
Oh my God, that, that was so scary.
But it just, you know, you put those types of things in there.
Okay. Yeah, no, sounds good. I'll, I'll look at it when I get it and then, yeah, it's, it's just then going there and saying why we want it and why we should get it and...
Yeah, they, they, they put out a list, you know, say Saturday, such and such a day, and they give various departments, one's at eight-thirty.
Yep.
If it's big, it might be twenty minutes. If it's a school system, it might get an hour. Other boards and committees get five minutes.
Do we get five usually?
Maybe ten.
I'll take what I can get. I'll take it. Okay. Yeah, no, I think I, I've been thinking about things like that, so I think we're, we'll be good to go. And we get what we get.
Who moves will you turn?
I'm rushing to adjourn.
Yeah. Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening folks. Have a nice turkey.
Yeah.